Activity. So afterwards, what happens? So how it enters into plant system and then into human and animal system, all of that. The basics of all those concepts and all will be discussed through various videos. First, we'll go go to the introductory videos of Walter about this module. Yes. Uh, first, we'll go through the outline together. So what we are expected to learn. Sure, could you might? Share that. We will be understanding. We'll have an improved understanding of the complex processes regarding neutral availability. And uptake in fungi and plants and also preventative health and diet related diseases for humans and animals. We'll have broad global perspectives and also scientific discussion as to how nutrition is key factor. To preventative health. Okay, so without much delay, we'll go into this first video.
Good morning again, and this is now module seven of the masterclass for India on natural farming and rebuilding. Sustainable agro ecosystems. As we've discussed that we've gone through a whole sequence of, you know, why natural farming, what, how, the sponge? And then how do we use the sponge? Or how does the sponge give us agency in terms of rehydrating landscapes? How does the sponge give us agency in enhancing the bio fertility? Of our agro ecosystems without needing to put nutrients on. This module seven actually takes that one step further and looks at actually the role of the sponge. In actually creating a whole new dimension of microbial ecology. In the soil microbial root interface in soil. And how does that influence the nutritional integrity of the food we eat? And through that, the preventative health of the food we eat. So it's really understanding, okay, how does actually nature absorb nutrients from soils? And the sophisticated mechanisms that it nature uses to give a quality control. And selectively taking up essential nutrients and leaving behind potentially toxic nutrients in its process. We've always looked at nutrients as simply very passive. Okay, here are nutrients and soils that we add, and then we assume the plants can get them. But in fact, it's much, much more sophisticated in nature. Where there are nutrients in soil or elements in soils, many of them are toxic and deleterious to health. But nature through its mycorrhizal interfaces is actually selectively intelligently. Taking up nutrients that the fungi need for their health and leaving behind toxins. And of course, providing those nutrients to the plants that they depend on for their sugars. We as animals, of course, have evolved completely over the last millions of years on. As as omnivores, as herbivores, living off those plants. So our nutritional requirements very much mirror the same as the plants. And we need to ensure that we get the right nutrients in the right forms, concentrations, balances. That we need for our health. And in the sense here is this natural process whereby the mycorrhizal fungi. The interface between the dead mineral soil and the plant roots does that for us. So it's quite a profound and important mechanism, and it's only available. Through natural farming processes or as nature evolved, and of course thereby natural farming process. And it's something we've completely misunderstood or not actually incorporated into our industrial agriculture. Okay, and so it's a little bit if we explain it, and this is going back to module four. Where we looked at, okay, here is a sponge. We had this little. Set of toys where we say, look, here are mineral particles. And basically the microbes and the organic matter have glued them together into this loose three dimensional matrix. And in doing so, created voids in the soil that of course make the soil porous. About to infiltrate, retain water, allow roots to proliferate. But also allow microbes to proliferate all over these mineral surfaces. And when we contrast that to the same micro, the same minerals, but in a solid compacted soil or rock equivalent. You can see the difference in volume, but also the lack of surface exposure. So if we sort of looked at these two red discs, for example, as essential phosphorus, for example. You know, the lack of exposure here, by contrast, we've got nutrients exposed. And what the fungi are doing, or what the microbial solubilization interface is doing is actually. Allowing nutrients to be concentrated and taken up from these essential nutrient surfaces. But not from some of the other minerals in the soil that might be toxic. For example, aluminium, cadmium, lead, these are all minerals that are dominant often in soils. But are not deleterious to fungal growth, plant growth and human growth or health. And so it's this selective intelligent uptake of nutrients that we're really looking at. And basically, that's a fundamental difference, whereas in nature, you had these. Extensive lengths of mycorrhizal hyphae proliferating throughout the soil. Driving the nutrient uptake up to twenty five thousand kilometers of fungal hyphae. Per cubic meter of healthy soil. And it's the membrane interfaces from these fungal hyphae where they're selectively. Dissolving, solubilizing and taking up nutrients across those surfaces. And that's in a sense going on all the time. So we've got this massive quality control. Selective intelligent quality control interface through these fungal membranes. Between the mineral particles and of course the cytoplasm of the fungi. And of course, the cytoplasm of the fungi then feed directly into the plant roots to give the plants their nutritional requirements. And that's in a sense how nature took up nutrients, right? Ninety eight percent of plants in nature are mycorrhizal. And over ninety five percent of nutrient uptake in those natural mycorrhizal plant system. Are taken up through these selective intelligent interfaces. And of course, natural farming all the way through to the Second World War relied on exactly the same processes. So our food up to the Second World War was basically all based on this nutrient uptake mechanism. That nature had evolved to give you that quality control between essential nutrients. Concentrating those and leaving behind excluding potentially toxic nutrients. We changed that after the Second World War because basically we then had the capacity to intervene. And we basically said, look, we can use oil based energy, massive quantities of oil based energy. To change industrial agriculture. We could use that energy to cultivate the land. Make more mineral surfaces available by disturbing the land oxidizing that soil. And basically, that oil based energy gave us the power to cultivate soils. That oil based energy gave us the capacity to generate a lot of basically chemical fertilizers. So rather than relying on the natural nutrients in soil, we were able to then basically say, look, let's. Mine minerals from mineral deposits or fertilizer or nutrients from mineral deposits. Treat them with acids and what have you to make them soluble fertilizer. And so we've been adding nutrients as fertilizers to those cultivated soils. And to stop disease incidences and stuff like that, we've also, of course, since the Second World War. Used a whole lot of biocides, you know, toxic poisons to say, look, we can use these to kill insects. We can use these to kill fungi, we can use these to kill weeds, and therefore this is the whole biocide. Uh, input into industrial agriculture. And our industrial agriculture then has sort of become actually really quite powerful. In killing this whole microbial interface that existed between the soil, mineral particles and the plant. And so we have completely contrasting mechanisms now whereby plants take up nutrients. Whereas before it was through these fungal hyphae, but afterwards, second world, after the Second World War. With industrial agriculture, we more or less have killed all those fungi. And we're just relying on now nutrients made available from our chemical fertilizers. And these are of course only the nutrients that are available in soil solution. Soluble nutrients because most of the actual essential nutrients, they're not soluble, they're absorbed onto. Cation exchange surfaces, but they're not in the soil solution and they're not able to be taken up. By the plants readily because it's effectively just taking up now nutrients. Uh, from the soil solution as a transpiration stream. As a consequence of this, the nutrient concentration. In our industrial food has changed radically from what it was previously. Okay, so our nutrient concentration in industrial food is now often. Hyper saturated with those soluble fertilizer nutrients, the nitrogen, the potassium, the phosphorus, the sulfur. You know, those readily available nutrients we put on, they're often got very high concentration of soluble. Toxic nutrients that are exactly, oh, that's, oh, exist in the soil solution. For example, we have acid soil. We have a lot of aluminium in soil solution and yes, the plants will, industrial plants will automatically take up that aluminium. Similar with things like cadmium and lead, when they're soluble in the soil solution. Again, the plant will take those up, concentrate them in plants. So the nutrient content or concentration in our industrial food is completely different from what it was previously naturally. Uh, it concentrates some of these added nutrients, but generally speaking, it has less than a third of the concentration. That of the other essential nutrients, the other forty fifty essential nutrients that our plants have and we need for our health. So your zinc, your magnesium, manganese, your, you know, copper, all those other essential nutrients. That often we only require in very, very small concentration parts per million. Aren't available because these nutrients are in this, absorbed onto soil surfaces and not in the soil solution. And as a consequence, we have now basically completely different nutritional integrities. In the food we're eating compared to the food that our grandparents ate pre-Second World War. Okay, so it's a different ratio of nutrients, you know, whereas they had a full. Range of forty essential nutrients, all in the right concentrations and balances selectively. Taken up by these mycorrhizal hyphae networks, we now have gone and aborted all of that. And we're just taking nutrients from fertilizer nutrient with very, very little of the essential other nutrients.
Yeah, this is the first part of Walter's introduction. So. What he was summarizing is that. Before plants, fungi were no solubilizing rock and. Plants, when they were evolving, they depended on fungal activity. So the nutritional requirement of trees is similar to that of fungi, okay? And also a further connection is that since animals, humans are dependent on plants. Our nutritional requirement is also similar to that of plants. So what is coming from soils facilitated by fungi is key for all life. So all the nutrients need to be entering into. Uh, organisms, system in right forms, concentrations, all of that. So, so that is the similarity. So otherwise we would be wondering, uh, these are lower level. Organisms and we are higher level organisms, our nutritional requirements are completely different. But he, uh, he explains to us that. All that is facilitated by fungi. So fungi, fungi selectively picks up which nutrient at what concentration and ratios and forms. Need to be picked up by its body that is hyphal threads. So that is supplied to plant. So there is some intelligence selective absorption that is happening at the level of fungi. And ninety eight percent of plants are mycorrhizal. So all plants and trees are deriving their nutrition from. Applied intelligence of fungi. So that is the key factor. Um, that drives, you know, um, nutrition in microbially rich undisturbed soils. So, and, and, uh, there is another form that, uh, of nutrient uptake that is. From the soil solution. Soil solution means when. Uh, soil is having water, all the nutrients are dissociated into their ionic forms, plus and minus. Uh, charged. So, uh, plant root has certain charge, negative charge. Clay particle has negative charge. So these ions jump from surface to surface, clay surface to root surface and then get set off. So in this system where fungi is not active, whatever is dissolved in the soil solution is picked up by the plant. So it is not applying intelligence when fungi is absent. It is not selectively picking up, uh, uh, ions. So therefore. Our present foods, plants do not have all those nutrients. So, um, means some, some toxic nutrients are also coming into the system. Some vital nutrients are being left behind because plant is unable to differentiate or selectively uptake. Through its root because, uh, in post World War Two. Uh, our production system is essentially on oil based energy. So we have disturbed soil, applied fertilizers and destroyed all microbial activities. So all our nutrients are. Made in that form so that they'll become readily water soluble so that they can dissociate in soil solution and. Be picked up by the plant roots. So that is the major change. So the, what he was telling is before World War Two, our foods were different. They had a lot of nutrients, all fifty different elements were there in our foods. But now it is not the case. Okay, so we'll go to the next video.
And, and so we've done these studies, I mean, the science is very clear on this, the UK Ministry of Health, the USDA. CSRO Division of Human Nutrition, we've done all the analysis, we've got all that data of this change in nutrient content. But we haven't recognized the significance of that in terms of now our preventative health. And this is now a very, very critical issue because. We know from again, previous biochemical foundational studies. That we or any organism needs the right nutrients in the right forms, concentration ratios. Ninety percent of our biochemistry is driven by enzymes. And those enzymes have essential mineral nutrient requirements. If you don't have those mineral nutrients, you don't have those enzymes, you don't have those enzyme functions. And some of them are quite profound. For example, we need selenium, you know, in parts per million. Very, very small amounts of selenium, but it's essential for making enzymes like some of the peroxidases. And these peroxidases enzymes are of course critical, for example, in killing cancer cells. It's more complicated than that, but really it's, it's getting to that basics to say, look, we need the right. Integrity of mineral content in our food because we need those minerals for our preventative health. And of course, our food, as we've said before, now contains often a third or less of the essential, uh, of the key nutrients. And often zero, none of those essential nutrients that were only provided by the mycorrhizal. Networks, those selective intelligent interfaces between toxic mineral soil. And the microbes and then the living roots. And so that's created an enormous challenge now in terms of, well, what has been the consequences of this on our health? Now, we have some direct associations, but we've got very profound epidemiological. Data around the world, particularly in the Western world, that yes, the nutritional integrity of our food is compromised. It's, it's very much lower, the nutrient, not just the nutrient density, but the whole ratio and balance of nutrients in that food. But we've also basically got since the Second World War, this exponential explosion. Of self induced diet related diseases. These are diseases that are directly linked to the nutrition of, in the food we eat. And of course, our absence of those nutrients to give us the biochemical defenses we need. Okay, and so we've got explosions of, yeah, these diet induced diseases, the diabetes, cancer. Cardiac diseases, autoimmune diseases, you know, a whole range of diseases that are related directly. To our nutrition and of course directly related then to our deficiencies in our biochemistry. There are at the moment some eight billion people on the planet, there'll be ten billion by twenty fifty. But even of the eight billion people, there's about eight hundred million people that are still malnourished or hungry going without food. But now basically we've got eight billion people, but two to three billion people are overweight, obese. Eating too much but not getting the nutrients they need. And another four billion of those eight billion are sub clinically malnourished. You know, they're basically yet out there, but then got deficiencies in some of their essential nutrients. Which are in a sense directly associated with triggering these self induced diet related diseases. We, we're spending enormous amount of money now on basically disease management, healthcare. Okay, in America, for example, some eighteen percent of GDP is being used in healthcare. To sustain or try to maintain the health or respond to the diseases in some fifty percent of the population. The other fifty percent can't afford health insurance, so they don't access it, can't access it. And so we've got this enormous now economic cost of these diet related diseases. That are impacting societies. And this is really more so than climate change, more so than soil degradation. One of the really limiting factors on humanity. The, our compromising of our preventative health and basically becoming. While we're still living longer as an age, we're living longer but less healthy. And have this exponential explosion of these serious debilitating diseases. And the question is, of course, how do we reverse that? How do we get back to preventative health? How do we get back to basically healthy biochemistries so that we avoid these diseases? We have resilience to these diseases. And a lot of that message is actually how do we get back to healthy food? And basically come back to the message of, okay, how do we ensure that our food has a nutritional integrity? Of all these essential nutrients in the right forms, concentration balances for our preventative health. Which comes back down to natural farming, right? Because as we've had up to the Second World War, our whole evolution, our biochemistry. Was dependent on that nutritional integrity. That was provided naturally, free of charge, without us actually knowing about it in detail. Through the way that mycorrhizal fungi, plants took up nutrients from nature. And our action after the Second War through industrial agriculture, the Green Revolution and aborting. That microbial interface between the soil and plants has now triggered this. Basically loss of nutritional integrity, but with that also induced this diet related. Explosion of disease conditions. So this is a fundamental issue that's facing humanity. How do we turn this around? And in sets, it's going to be one of the most compelling reasons why natural farming. Has to now be recognized, not just for its resilience, its productivity. Its capacity to feed the eight billion people, but just as importantly. To make sure that the food that the eight billion people are getting has got the nutritional integrity. Has a preventative health value they need for their future. And quite frankly, if we're going to have ten billion people on the planet by twenty fifty as projected. And we're going to have healthy people, then we must revisit this whole question of the nutritional integrity of our food. It comes down to again, everything in nature, very, very simply. Because we can ensure this nutritional integrity very simply, just by growing food. As it was evolved to grow naturally through these mycorrhizal interfaces. So it's again, the case to go back to natural farming systems. So that our food has that nutritional integrity. We've got lots of case studies where, yes, communities that are living on those natural foods. Grown in those natural processes, uh, as a general rule, much, much healthier from a preventative health condition. Live longer, much healthier because of how they've grown. We've got case studies from civilizations, you know, basically, you know, very healthy civilizations, whether the Mediterranean. Or East Asia that have basically survived sustained healthy populations because of the integrity. Nutritional integrity of the food that they, those communities were living on. And of course, we've got the other epidemiological evidence that yes, we are compromising that health. It's of course more complicated than that biochemically, it's not just a matter of the actual, um, food that's basically. Or the nutritional integrity of the food that's grown, it's also of course involves our microbiome. You know, what is it that goes across into our blood from the food that we're eating? What is the role of our microbiome? And again, as a membrane interface selectively. Providing the quality control system between what we eat and what goes into our blood. But it's very much parallel with what's happening in the soil. And this whole complex influences of course our preventative nutrition health, we're not claiming that. You know, just eating this plant will fix this disease, but we're certainly making a very clear case. That there's a really direct association between how we've compromised the health of our food. And therefore our preventative health. So it really is a compelling case for preventative health, a compelling case for. Regenerative agriculture. And as we talked about in the last module, a compelling case to say, we need to know. How our food is grown, we need to know where and how the food was grown. So we have the assurance, the confidence that it was grown through these natural processes. And not industrially through artificial hydroponics where we're only dependent on. The chemical nutrients we add as fertilizer. So we have to have that confidence. And as we sort of said last time, we've also got to build the actual cyclic economies. Where we were turning nutrients from waste, you know, from city to soil, urban waste back into the land. And so we've got this enormous powerful movement of natural farming, urban agriculture. Which is all looking at, okay, how do we both grow food, nutrient cycles? How do we grow it more naturally through these nutrient cycle, but also how do we have the discrimination? the discrimination, the confidence in how our food is grown? Because only that can actually, at the end of that, ensure its nutriti- nutritional integrity and health. At the end of the day, this is a massive change. This will involve a massive change in agriculture because people will now look at food not just in terms of the calorific content, the amino acid, the protein, the lipid content, but will actually be looking at the integrity of that food from that nutritional point of view. And people will, when they recognize that this is so critical for their preventative health, will be directly voting with their spending, their food spending, to ensure that they get that. So we can see a massive market switch when people recognize, yes, their preventive health, the preventative health of their children, their families, their future is dependent on the quality of the food they eat, the nutritional integrity of the food they eat, and whether it's been grown through natural farming, natural systems, or effectively through industrial hydroponics. And this is actually one of the biggest switches that we're going to see agriculture into the 21st century. And in a sense, the natural farming agenda is leading in that role. And I think this science of, yes, nutritional integrity is going to be the cutting edge that says, yes, this is a basis of not just why we're getting these diseases, but this is a basis of how we can prevent most of those diseases and enhance human wellbeing and futures. So look, let's have some more discussions on this in the Q and A. But again, a profound change in agriculture, but also profoundly important cutting edge where natural farming really stands well above the status quo. And really a compelling reason why natural farming is so important for our health and our future. Thank you.
So, uh, the main, uh, highlights of, uh, this video is that, uh, so, um, after, uh, World War II, there are a lot of advances in the field of study. And we are able to understand microbial world and also a lot of biochemistry, understanding gut biome, all of that. So from that, what he was telling is that 90% of all biochemistry in any living organism is driven by enzymes. And those enzymes have specific functions and they require certain nutrients. If nutrients are not present in that organisms, those enzymes won't function. So they, uh, their function doesn't happen and impaired. So, so, uh, studies also say that, uh, in the past 40, 50, uh, years, the nutrient quantity of nutrients in our foods when compared to earlier are only one-third. Means just they are good in calorific values and all of that quantity-wise, calorific value-wise and some major parameters, but not on all the required nutrients, especially trace elements in their, uh, concentrations and required forms, all of that. So because of that, uh, diseases are now rampant and people and countries are spending more on, uh, healthcare. So, uh, that industry is also growing because, uh, food is compromised and we don't have required nutrition from foods. So now there are a lot of diseases, diabetes, even cardiac diseases, all of that. They are all directly linked to nutrition. So on the macroeconomic side also, eight billion are hungry. Half of them are clinically malnourished and the remaining four billion, two to four billion, are overweight. They are eating much, but they are not getting enough nutrients and they have become obese, all of that. So these all can be linked to, uh, mismanagement of soil. How, uh, we have disrupted all the natural processes, all of that. And we have to reverse that is what he's calling all of us for action. And we have to build healthy biochemistry and also improve nutrition. And also, people should be like, there should be an element of traceability also. We should be knowing from which condition is our food being grown that we are eating. So we need to kind of promote that, uh, that sort of management practices, all of that. And also recycling of the nutrients has to happen. So, uh, we are introduced to this preventative health and we have to understand how nutrients are digested, absorbed, how they are important, that we'll see in the next video.
Hello, I'm Dr. Blue Sneeder John. I'm a bariatric surgeon. My specialty is in obesity management and health and wellness in patients' lives. Meat is a nutrient-dense food that provides all the essential amino acids needed for health. It also is a rich source of vitamin and minerals. Not all meat is the same. What we're understanding is, over the past 100 years, the nutrient density in both our plants and animals has declined. Matter of fact, it's almost went down 40%. This all goes back to soil health. The healthier our soil, the healthier our plants, and the healthier the animals that graze those plants. Plants and animals that are grown on regenerative farms, such as Joyce Farms, that's how they raise their animals. We're starting to see that the omega-6, omega-3 profile is almost threefold lower. That translates into health. For example, decreased inflammation in our body. Also, it's healthier for our heart and it's shown to help with weight management. What we're starting to see is when animals are grown in a regenerative fashion, this translates into health for us as people. And so I really advocate people look at where they buy their products from, find products that are grown on a regenerative farms that have healthier soil, therefore translates into a healthier person.
This video discusses that, uh, no, uh, animals grown on regenerative farms are better in terms of nutrition. And, uh, there is a network of, you know, regenerative farmers and, uh, so we, uh, the, the health, health experts are calling that. You should, uh, get in touch with, you know, getting your meat and food from those sources. Regenerative agriculture, regenerative farming network. Okay, next please. We have skipped one, uh, long.
Most diverse and.
Just pause it. Uh, on a podcast, there are no visuals in that that discusses mainly on how you can measure the nutritional, uh, nutritional integrity in the foods that we are growing, like a refractometer, some scientific discussion is there. So we, uh, we have skipped that. Uh, but you are all requested to watch at your own hands. Okay, thank you. This is a video about the basic understanding of how plants and the higher plants have evolved and how they are effective in this nutrient cycling and all the cooling off planet, all of that. Otherwise, primitive plants are like algae, you know? Few cells have in chloroplasts, all of that. Now, this video explains the basic, uh, plant biology. Yeah.
This is Yarrow, a flowering plant found all over the northern hemisphere. Its feathery leaves have naturally stringent properties. And its scientific name, Achillea, uh, comes from Achilles, the Greek hero who's said to have used it on the wounds of his soldiers. And this is snake grass, otherwise known as horse tail or to the kids, pop grass, because you could just pop it apart and then put it back together again, although on top there, it's dead now. And this is a ponderosa pine, one of my favorite trees. It can grow hundreds of feet tall. And on a warm day, if you sniff it, it smells like butterscotch. They all have different shapes, sizes and properties. But each of these things is a vascular plant, one of the most diverse and dare I say, important families in the tree of life. Since their predecessors first arrived on the scene some 420 million years ago, vascular plants have found tremendous success through their ability to exploit resources all around them. They convert sunshine into food. They absorb nutrients directly through the soil without the costly process of digestion. And they even enlist the help of some friends when it comes to reproduction. So often, when they're doing their thing, it involves a third party, which like, you know, good for them. But these things alone can't explain vascular plants' extraordinary evolutionary success. I mean, algae was photosynthesizing long before plants made it fashionable. And as we learned last week, non-vascular plants have reproductive strategies that are tricked out six ways from Sunday. So like, what gives? The secret to vascular plant's success is their defining trait, conductive tissues that can take food and water from one part of a plant to another part of a plant. This may sound simple enough, but the ability to move stuff from one part of an organism to another was a huge evolutionary breakthrough for vascular plants. It allowed them to grow exponentially larger, store food for lean times, and develop some fancy features that allowed them to spread farther and faster. It was one of the biggest revolutions in the history of life on Earth. The result, plants dominated Earth long before animals even showed up. And even today, they hold most of the world records. The largest organism in the world is a redwood in Northern California, 115 meters tall, bigger than three blue whales laid end to end. The most massive organism is a grove of quaking aspen in Utah, all connected by the roots, weighing a total of 13 million pounds. And the oldest living thing, a patch of seagrass in the Mediterranean dating back 200,000 years. We spend a lot of time congratulating ourselves on how awesomely magnificent and complex the human animal is. But you guys, I gotta hand it to you. So you know by now, the more specialized tissues an organism has, the more complex they are and the better they typically do. But you also know that these changes don't take place overnight. The tissues that define vascular plants didn't evolve all at once. But today, we recognize three types that make these plants what they are. Dermal tissues make up their outermost layers and help prevent damage and water loss. Vascular tissues do all of that conducting of materials I just mentioned. And the most abundant tissue type, ground tissues, carry out some of the most important functions of plant life, including photosynthesis and the storage of leftover food. Now, some plants never go beyond these basics. They sprout from a germinated seed, develop these tissues and then stop. This is called primary growth and plants that are limited to this stage are herbaceous. As the name says, they are like herbs, small, soft and flexible. And typically, they die down to the root or die completely after one growing season. Pretty much everything you see growing in a backyard garden, herbs and flowers and broccoli and that kind of stuff, those are herbaceous. But a lot of vascular plants go on to secondary growth, which allows them to grow not just taller, but wider. This is made possible by the development of additional tissues, particularly woody tissues. These are your woody plants, which include shrubs and bark-covered vines called lianas, and of course, your trees. But no matter how big they may or may not grow, all vascular plants are organized into three main organs, all of which you are intimately familiar with, not just because you knew what they were when you were in second grade, but also because you probably eat them every day. First, the root. It absorbs water and nutrients and serves as a pantry of leftover food. And of course, keeps the plant anchored in the ground. Next, the stem. It contains structures that transport fluids and store nutrients and also is home to specialized cells called meristems that are responsible for creating new growth. But their most important task is to support the last organ, the leaf. This, of course, is where the plant exchanges gases with the atmosphere and collects sunlight to manufacture food with the help of water and minerals collected through the root and sent up through the stem. Now, each of these organs contains all three tissues, which together work to absorb, conduct and exploit one of the world's most important molecules, water. So since plants are pretty much designed around water, let's follow some H2O to see how plants make the most of it. First, as with most organisms, nothing can get in or out of a plant without getting past the skin. In this case, the dermal tissue. In smaller, non-woody plants, most of this is just a thin layer of cells called fittingly, the epidermis. Actually, this is great for keeping the outside out and the inside in, but the epidermis can also support some snazzy features in different parts of the plant. In leaves and stems, for example, it often has a waxy outer layer called a cuticle that helps prevent water loss. On some leaves or on pods that hold those valuable seeds, the epidermis can sprout hair-like structures called trichomes that help keep insects at bay and secrete toxic or sticky fluids. The same secretions that make the Yarrow useful for first aid, for instance, are also what discourage ants from using it for lunch. Finally, in the roots, the epidermis has similar features called root hairs that maximize the root surface area for absorption, just like we've seen in our own organ systems. This, of course, is where the plants generally absorb the water they need. By the way, the cells that make up this dermal tissue are the most basic, essential building blocks of vascular plants called parenchyma or visceral flesh cells. These are the most abundant plant cells found not just in roots, but also in stems, leaves and flowers. They're thin and flexible and can perform all kinds of functions depending on their location. Now, after passing through the skin of the root and through its starchy cortex or outer layer, water arrives in the first of two kinds of vascular tissue, the xylem. The xylem's main function is to carry water and dissolved minerals from the root up to the leaves. But like, how? How, by Zeus's beard, can plants make water defy gravity? Well, a lot of the reason is that up top, the plant is continuously evaporating water through a process called evapotranspiration. As water evaporates from the leaves, which I'll explain in greater detail when we get up there, it creates negative pressure inside the xylem, which draws more water upward. Plants can transpire truly staggering amounts of water and it's because of this that our atmosphere is habitable. A single acre of corn gives off about 3,000 gallons of water every day. A large oak tree, just one tree, can transpire 40,000 gallons in a year. Only 1% of the water that plants absorb is actually used by plants, mostly in photosynthesis. The rest is slowly and invisibly released, providing one of Earth's most crucial functions, transporting water from the soil into the atmosphere, where it then returns to the surface as rain, making all life possible. Yeah, chew on that as we continue up the xylem. And as we get higher in the plant, we begin to encounter a greater diversity of cells designed not only for moving stuff around, but also for providing structural support. For instance, elongated cells with thicker cell walls called calenchyma help hold up the plant body, especially in herbaceous plants and young structures like new shoots. Celery is mostly made up of these cells, so you already know what they taste like. In larger woody plants, you also find sclerenchyma cells, especially in the xylem. These have even thicker cell walls made from lignin, a super-strong polymer that makes wood woody. What's weird about sclerenchyma cells, though, is that most of them, when they reach maturity, they die. They just leave behind their hearty cell walls as a support structure and new cells from a fresh layer during the next growing season push the old, dead layer outward. In warm, wet years, these layers grow thick, while in cold, dry years, they're light and thin. These woody remains form tree rings, which scientists can use not only to track the age of a tree, but also the history of the climate that it lived in. Now, at the top of the xylem, water arrives at its final destination, the leaf. Here, water travels through an increasingly minuscule network of vein-like structures until it's dumped into a new kind of tissue called the mesophil. As you can tell from its name, meso meaning middle and phyl meaning leaf, this layer sits between the top and the bottom epidermis of the leaf, forming the bacon in the BLT, that is the leaf structure. This, my friends, marks our entry into the ground tissue. I'm, I'm sure you're as excited about that as I am. Despite its name, ground tissue isn't just in the ground and it's actually just defined as any tissue that's either not dermal or vascular. Regardless of this low billing, though, it's where the money is and the money, I mean, food. Now, the mesophil is chock full of parenchyma cells of various shapes and sizes and many of them arranged loosely to let CO2 and other materials flow between them. These cells contain the photosynthetic organelles, chloroplasts, which, as you know, host the process of photosynthesis. But where is this CO2 coming from? Well, some of the neatest features on the leaf are these tiny openings in the epidermis called stomata. Around each stomata are two guard cells connected at both ends that regulate its size and shape. When conditions are dry, the guard cells are limp. They stick together, closing the stomata. But when the leaf is flush with water, the guard cells plump up and bow out from each other, opening the stomata to allow water to evaporate and let carbon dioxide in. This is what allows evapotranspiration to take place, as well as photosynthesis. And you remember photosynthesis? Through a series of brain-rackingly complicated reactions sparked by the energy from the sun, the CO2 combines with hydrogen from the water to create glucose. The leftover oxygen is released through the stomata and the glucose is ready for shipping. Now, if you've been paying attention, you noticed that earlier, I said that there are two kinds of vascular tissue. And here, the circle is made complete as the sugar exits the leaf through the floem. The floem is mostly made of cells stacked in tubes with perforated plates at either end. After the glucose is loaded into these cells called sieve cells or sieve tube elements, they then absorb water from the nearby xylem to form a rich, sugary sap to transport the sugar. This sweet sap, by the way, is what gives the ponderosa its delicious smell. By way of internal pressure and diffusion, the sap travels wherever it's needed to parts of the plant experiencing growth during the growing season or down to the root, if it's dormant, like during winter, where it's stored until spring. So now that you understand everything that it takes for vascular plants to succeed, I hope you see why plants equals winning. And I'm not just talking about them sweeping the contest for biggest, heaviest, oldest living things. Though again, congrats on that, guys. Plants are not only responsible for like, making rain happen, they're also the first and most important link in our food chain. That's why the world's most plant-rich habitats, like rainforests and grasslands, are so crucial to our survival. When those habitats change, everything changes: Weather, food supply, even incidents of natural disasters. So I, for one, welcome our plant overlords, because they've done a great job so far making life on Earth possible. But I know you're curious: How do different kinds of plants make more plants? That's all about the birds and the bees, which is what we'll be talking about next week.
Uh, I understand, uh, it is very fast, so you can, uh, playback a little slower. So this is about basic biology of plants, how small plants and/or have developed into trees and different kinds of tissues to conduct food and water, and how water enters into the system, and how CO2 enters into the system, and how through photosynthesis, food is, you know, prepared, and how gaseous exchange takes place, and how, uh, the food that is prepared in the leaf is redistributed to the entire plant parts, all of that we could see. So, uh, there are certain key processes that you should follow later, like transpiration and the... How much water does a plant take and utilize actually in photosynthesis, and how much of it is released into the atmosphere? And the presence of these trees like, you know, kind of kickstart the hydrological process. Lot of water. 99% of what a tree takes water is released back into the atmosphere. So there is a water cycle through the, presented by trees, sort of. So, okay, this is about the basics, uh, and we'll go to the next video.
One of the keys to understanding child nutrition is understanding what happens to the food our children eat once it's entered their mouths. So let's start by drawing a very basic model of digestion. Now, the food our children eat can be broken down into three categories, and they're categories of what we call macronutrients. And all of these macronutrients are digested in slightly different ways, so I'm gonna color-code them so that we can sort of follow what happens to each of these categories of macronutrients. So the major macronutrients are carbohydrates, I'll write carbs for short, fats, and proteins. When we use the term micronutrients, we're talking about things like vitamins and minerals and the other important components in the food that we eat. Now, the digestive tract is actually just a long tube that extends from the mouth all the way down to the anus. So we're gonna follow that tube and trace the path of food after it enters the mouth and as it passes down this long tube that leads all the way through the digestive system. Digestion actually begins in the mouth with the act of chewing. That's an important part of digestion that we sometimes overlook, because it makes big pieces of food. It breaks them down into smaller, more manageable pieces that can be attacked by the different enzymes, and some of those actually are secreted directly into the oral cavity or the mouth by accessory glands called salivary glands. And the salivary glands secrete saliva, surprisingly. And in that saliva are a couple of different enzymes, and I'm gonna color-code the enzymes as well. So the first enzyme that's in the saliva is called amylase, and amylase works to begin the digestion of carbohydrates, that's why I've done it in purple. We call that salivary amylase, because there's also another kind of amylase that comes into play later on in the digestive tract. The other enzyme found in saliva is called lipase, and we also call that salivary lipase, because there's a different kind of lipase that comes into the picture later on. And lipase begins the digestion of fats, that's why I've drawn it in yellow. So food is chewed in the mouth and then swallowed down in the form of what we call a bolus. And it's sort of, that bolus has been mixed up with the salivary juices or the salivary enzymes, and it passes down a tube called the esophagus. This is the esophagus. And the esophagus leads down into a dilated part of this tube that we call the stomach. So this is the stomach. And there's actually a sphincter here, or some, it's kind of like a valve that we call the lower esophageal sphincter, that guards the entryway to the stomach. And if that valve becomes leaky, then food can actually leak up from the stomach and give us heartburn. That's where heartburn happens. So once food enters the stomach, it gets mixed with a bunch of other things that are secreted by the stomach, things like hydrochloric acid or stomach acid, and I'll just write HCl, because that's the chemical abbreviation for hydrochloric acid. The stomach also secretes a digestive chemical called pepsin. And pepsin, I'll draw it in green, because pepsin, you guessed it, it digests proteins. And the other thing that the stomach secretes is a chemical called lipase. And this is gastric lipase. Gastric means it comes from the stomach. And just like the salivary lipase, the gastric lipase continues the work of digesting the fats that have entered the stomach. Now, the stomach is really muscular, so it kind of churns all this food around, the food that's come down the esophagus as a bolus. And what ends up leaving the stomach is more of a liquid, and we call that liquid chyme. That's what leaves the stomach. And it leaves the stomach through another valve or sphincter. That's the pyloric sphincter. That's a good word for a spelling bee. Okay, so once the chyme has passed through the pyloric sphincter, it enters into the first part of the small intestine, and that part of the small intestine is called the duodenum. I'll just write that in: Duodenum. And some really important things happen in the duodenum, or the duodenum, as it's sometimes called. And what happens there is that the liver secretes a chemical called bile. And that bile is stored, sometimes when it's not needed immediately, it's stored. So it's created in the liver, and I'll just draw it kind of coming out of the liver. And then it actually is stored in a small organ called the gallbladder. That's over here. So the gallbladder's gonna store the bile. And I'm just gonna write that in for you. That's our gallbladder. And this is our liver. And then, when the bile is needed, and I'll just write the bile in here in yellow, so you can probably guess what the bile is used to digest. When the bile is needed, it's secreted out of the gallbladder, and it enters the duodenum, right about here. And there's another accessory organ that also sort of dumps its products into the duodenum right about there at the same spot, and I'll draw that one in blue. And this accessory organ is called the pancreas. The pancreas. And the pancreas is really important. It secretes probably the most important digestive enzymes into the small intestine, and those enzymes are amylase, and this is now pancreatic amylase. It also secretes pancreatic lipase, another way of digesting fat. And then it secretes two enzymes that are used in the digestion of protein. One is called tripsin, and its cousin, chymotripsin. So all of that exciting stuff happens in the duodenum. And after that, the small intestine continues. And it continues on for anywhere from about 15 to 30 feet. So it's really long and coiled up on itself. I'm drawing it kind of spread out. These coils of small intestine are actually all curled up on top of each other. The second part of the small intestine, and I'll just try and give you a sense of how long this part of the tube is. And the second part of the small intestine is called the jejunum. Jejunum. And then the last part of the small intestine is called the ileum. And basically, the small intestine is where big particles of food are broken down into their absorbable units and absorbed in this tube, the small intestine. What happens next is that the small intestine joins the large intestine. And the large intestine is sort of like a storage and drying unit, if you will. And it kind of curls around, and there's an ascending portion, a transverse portion, and the one I'm drawing now, the descending portion of the large intestine. And it ends in an S-shaped part that we call the sigmoid colon. So this would be your ascending portion of the large intestine. The transverse. And the descending here. I'll just write D E S for lack of space. Now, what's absorbed in the large intestine are things like excess water. So the longer feces, because this is ultimately gonna be feces that's secreted out once it passes through the sigmoid colon. This is our end product of digestion, and feces is gonna pass out through the anus. So the longer the feces sits in the large intestine, the drier it's gonna get, because water is being absorbed, and some solutes are also being absorbed in that tube. So the food we eat is going to be chewed up in the mouth and swallowed in the form of a bolus. The bolus is gonna pass down the esophagus and through the lower esophageal sphincter into the stomach, where it's gonna be mixed with stomach acid and things like pepsin and lipase, and turned into chyme. That chyme is gonna pass through the pyloric sphincter, and it's gonna head down into the duodenum. And in the duodenum, bile from the liver and the gallbladder is gonna be secreted into this part, as well as the pancreatic digestive enzymes like amylase, lipase, tripsin, and chymotripsin. So while this food is digesting into its smaller absorbable parts, it's also being absorbed as it passes through this long tube. And you can see how much time there is here to absorb all of the nutrients, because we don't want food to pass through here without enough time for those important nutrients to be absorbed. And then it gets here to the large intestine, and this valve, I didn't put this in, but this is called the ileocecal valve, because it's between the ileum and the cecum. And interestingly, in case you're interested here, this is where the appendix is. It's a little kind of pocket extension of the cecum. And if, for example, you eat a grape and you swallow all of the seeds and you have pretty bad luck, then one of those seeds might get stuck in here, and this appendix might get clogged and fill up with pus, and then you've got yourself an appendicitis. But if you're lucky and that doesn't happen, then the food that couldn't be either digested or absorbed passes into this ascending colon and slowly moves up through the transverse colon and down the descending colon, as it's kind of progressively dried and stored. And then, once it enters the sigmoid colon, then a bowel movement is triggered, and feces are secreted through the anus. And that is sort of the big picture of how digestion works. Now, I just want you to have kind of a window into what it looks like if we took, let's say, a cross-section through this small intestine. Let's say I took a slice like this out of the small intestine. What you would see would be a muscular tube like this. Let's say this is the chunk we've just cut out. And that tube on the inside is gonna have these kind of finger-like projections. And these finger-like projections are called villi. So this is a villus, but I'll write the plural term, which is villi. And I'll just make this arrow point to two of them, so you understand that that's the plural term. And the villi, what they do is they increase the surface area for absorption of all of those important nutrients that are gonna be found in the lumen, so the proteins, the fats, and the carbohydrates that are gonna be passing through this lumen. And better yet, to further increase the surface area, there are these kind of small, they look like hair-like projections, projecting off of the villi. And this is what we call the brush border. These are called microvilli, microvilli, or smaller villi. And the microvilli make up the brush border. And what that does is it further increases the surface area for absorption in the small intestine. Now, just to give you another view of what the small intestine looks like, what happens if I were to give you another cross-section that looks like this through the wall of the small intestine? What if we were to kind of slice it open? What you would see, you have your muscular wall here, and here are your finger-like projections called villi. Because we've zoomed in a bit, you can actually see that the brush border or the microvilli are actually made up of cells called enterocytes. And each of these cells has their own nucleus, and they're actually selective cells that can aid in the absorption of all of the important nutrients in the small intestine. So these guys are called enterocytes. Now, inside each of these villi, these finger-like projections, is something called a central lactile. And the central lactile is actually sort of a projection of the lymphatic system. So the central lactiles are continuous with the lymphatic system. And because I'm drawing them in yellow, you might guess that the fats that are gonna be in this lumen, and they've been emulsified by the bile, they've been broken down into smaller pieces by the gastric lipase and the salivary lipase and the pancreatic lipase, all of these small units of fat are gonna be absorbed into the central lactile and pass into the lymphatic system. Now, there's also, in each of these villi, there is a little capillary network. So each of these villi, each of these central lactiles is surrounded by a network of...
It is coming, Ramchandra, sir.
Can't be seen, sir.
Man, they're can't be seen, Nandi.
I see.
Okay, sir, check this, please.
Screen, huh? Screen, there, Paulie. Text screen, I say, Ramchandra, huh?
Sir, sir.
Text screen, I say, finger, Tony, move, Charlie, screen, no. Okay.
Okay.
Screen, God, okay. Tin, God, okay. Kind of keep, pay keep, we, percolate, go, too, daddy.
Yeah, yes, sir. Now it is visible. Yes, thank you.
Word, word, then.
Okay, thank you.
Capillaries that bring, bring blood toward the villus and then also take blood away. As capillary networks do, they carry blood away from an area. So the proteins and carbohydrates, so are, these are our carbohydrates. And these are our proteins. And these guys are going to be absorbed directly into the bloodstream, into the, the capillary networks that sort of surround these, these central lactiles. There are our carbohydrates going in. So you can see that this is how the small, broken down particles of the food that we eat actually get into our bodies, get into our bloodstream. And next, we're going to be looking at how our body uses those building blocks for either energy, for growth, or for storage in the human body.
Yeah, this is a very good video explaining all the basics of how food is digested. And our, our bodies are very careful in not letting any nutrient go waste. Unlike, for example, tree takes a lot of water and ninety-nine percent of it is released into air. So here, body is trying to absorb as many nutrients as possible, but our foods are not supplying enough. So last time, one expert in Walter's team told that. So body actually craves for more food in want of nutrient. But all it gets is just calories, but not nutrients. So that is why obesity is also rampant and that's one of the prime reasons. Body is craving for nutrients and we are unable to provide. Yeah, thank you. How many more videos are there, Shiva?
So one more video.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I haven't seen this. I'll watch along with you. Okay, please play. This is a forty-minute-long video.
Owning the house is a bad idea. You see, a lot of banks actually want to give you loans, please.
Recently, there was an interesting study that showed if you actually increase your level of omega threes by an extra serving a week or two, like from wherever you are with your starting point, you can increase your longevity, your survival by four point seven years.
Dr. William Lee, welcome to the show.
Thanks very much. It's a pleasure to be here.
Man, I'm excited to have you. As I was saying before we started rolling, you have such an interesting perspective on health. And the thing that was a real hook for me and where I think is the right place to start is a quote that you said, which is that health is not the absence of disease. Now, I found that very surprising. Then I heard you answer and I was like, okay, I'm with him. So why isn't health the absence of disease?
Well, so as a medical doctor, I train in internal medicine, which means that I take care of young and old, men and women, healthy and sick. You know, I have spent most of my career not only in sort of the, the, the center, the thick of the current of modern medicine, which is largely about prescriptions and largely about diagnosing and treating disease. The thing that's different about me, though, is I started realizing with all the successes we've had, you know, treat new treatments for twelve different types of cancers that didn't exist before, you know, that we were really only tackling part of the equation because wouldn't it be much better if we could actually prevent the disease in the first place? And what's interesting is the same science that teaches us how to intercept and tackle a disease using drugs actually teaches us in some ways, a hell of a lot more about how to prevent the disease in the first place. How do we actually, you know, not just pick up the pieces after the time bomb explodes or the stick of dynamite, but how do we actually pull the fuse out or disarm the time bomb, right? So that's what got me really interested in diverting my scientific focus from treatments to taking a look at prevention. Now, if you're talking about disease, it's pretty straightforward. Diagnose it, find a treatment, write a prescription, refer to a specialist. If you're talking about prevention, you're really talking about health. And this brings me full circle to where you, where you started, what we're starting. So what is health, right? I mean, I'm just like everyone else. Well, if I'm not, are you healthy? Well, if I'm not sick, I'm actually healthy, right? So in most people's minds, including mine, not being sick is kind of the default definition of being healthy. But that is very problematic because the absence of something, the absence of disease is very, is impossible to operationalize. You can't do something about the absence of something else. So that's what I started to ask, well, what is health if it's not just the lack of disease? Well, it turns out that, and this has been my research, turns out that health is not just the absence of disease. It is the result of our body's own hardwired defense systems, health defense systems that we're born with. These are, defense systems are formed in the womb before we're born. And the moment we appear on planet Earth, our health defenses are firing on all cylinders from day one all the way to our very last breath. And all of a sudden, that gives us a whole new canvas to understand what can we do to support health, what can we do to boost our body's health defenses?
Yeah, I love this idea. One, when you think about disease, it's happening within us all the time. And right now, I've heard you say this in interviews, right now, literally this minute, you and I are both forming cancers, but they are very small and the body has defense mechanisms against that and it goes and attacks it. And you talk about the five defenses that the body has. And when those five defenses are working well, then even though you're being assaulted from the outside, you've got things going wrong on the inside, you're able to hit this, I'll call homeostasis, that we think of as health. And really taking your approach of saying, okay, there are these five defenses, which would be great for you to walk us through what those five are, but that there are things that you can do on a daily basis that support those. And that's what I really want people to take away from your message. So what are those five defenses and how do we keep them optimized?
Yeah, so our body has five very simple health defense systems that are, that have now been discovered. They are, number one, something called angiogenesis. That's blood vessels. That's how our blood, body grows blood vessels. Angio means blood, blood vessels. Genesis is how the body grows blood vessels. We've got sixty thousand miles worth of blood vessels packed in our body. And these are the highways and byways of our oxygen, our nutrients, whatever we breathe, whatever we eat, in order for our cells to get the benefits of the critical elements of life, they have to be carried by the blood vessel. So that's so critical for our defenses. That's healthy. Number two, our stem cells. You know, when we were kids, we were told that starfish and salamanders can regenerate, but humans can't. Guess what? That textbook's been thrown right out the window because humans do regenerate just slowly. And we know that we regenerate because our hair grows back. You know, our skin can actually heal and grow itself back. But some of the crazy things that we're beginning to actually discover is that if you snip a piece of your lung off, it'll grow right back at the very tip. If you cut off, take away two-thirds of your liver. Okay, let's say that you have a tumor in your liver, you can remove two-thirds of it and that one-third will grow the rest of the liver back, kind of like a salamander's leg. It's crazy. And of course, our nerves regenerate. And so biotech companies have been trying for decades now to figure out how to inject stem cells. While Mother Nature's already beat them to it because stem cells are present in our body as a defense. And we're continuously regenerating ourselves from the inside-out repairing problems. You know, there's a road crew inside our body, yours and mine, right here, right now, that are fixing things that are invisible to us. Third, microbiome. We can talk more about this. You know, it's the tip of the spear of a whole new frontier about the human body that we're just beginning to understand. But the important part of it is that we know that when we've got good, healthy gut bacteria and this microbiome is the ecosystem of our gut bacteria, I call it the Great Barrier Reef in our body. You know, thirty-nine trillion bacteria all living inside there. And what we know, the important part for your viewers and listeners, is that they help, when they're healthy, they help to lower inflammation in our body, which then lowers all kinds of disease. They help optimize our metabolism. Everybody's always worried about their metabolism. Good gut bacteria helps that right along. Fight fat, help to avoid insulin sensitivity over, and avoid glucose surges. All very important, controls our hormones, you know, so that our mood and our brain, so our mood is actually healthy as well and can fight cancer and regulate obesity, all kinds of things. If our gut, and by the way, it's so easy to disrupt the gut. I mean, think about a tanker spill that destroys, you know, a coral reef. That's what we can accidentally do to ourselves by eating the wrong things. You know, if you were taken about by the Great Barrier Reef and you were to take a bottle of toxic material and pour it right down on top of the coral reef, guarantee you that the fish and the anemones are all going to be dead, okay? That's what we do to ourselves. So this higher level of awareness that we have, we have to take care of our gut microbiome, so important for, for defending our health, our gut defends our health. Fourth, our DNA defends us against the environment. So most people think about our DNA as our genetic code. Yes, it is. It is the blueprint for our proteins in our body that we inherited, half from our mom, half from our dad, et cetera, et cetera. However, the, the really cool unsung part of our DNA is that it's one of our body's five health defense systems. What does it do? It fixes itself. What do I mean by fixing itself? Well, we go out, you know, during the summer and you go to the beach and you are enjoying, laying out, you know, enjoying the weather, beach weather, the ultraviolet radiation is coming in and mutating your DNA. Now, how come we don't develop cancer all the time after going out to the beach? Because our DNA is hardwired to fix itself when it's damaged by the environment. And the beach is one thing, and I'm not even talking about the tanning salon. But I always ask people, when you're actually filling up your car with gas, like you're, you know, you're at the gas tank, do you stand upwind or downwind of the, of the, of the pump? And people go, huh? What are you talking about? I'm like, well, if you smell the fumes, the solvents, then you're standing downwind. And if you smell them, you're breathing in solvents that can mutate the DNA in your lung. So how come we don't get lung cancer? Because our DNA fixes itself. An amazing defense system that our DNA plays. And then finally is our immune system, which of course, you know, after the past year and a half, everybody knows just how important good, strong immunity actually is. But most people don't know that even as we get older, our immune system still has the capacity of fighting invaders, not just outside invaders like viruses and bacteria, but inside invaders like cancer. So we are able to now, and this is one of the most remarkable things I've seen in my medical career, give people who have cancer, even metastatic cancer that's spread, immune treatments that by themselves don't kill the cancer, but uncloak the cancer so that your immune system can go after the cancer. And even if you've got metastatic disease, even brain metastases, it's possible in some cases now for your own immune system to wipe out all traces of cancer and put you not just in remission, okay? That's what chemo does, can put you in remission. But immunotherapy can actually turn the clock back and reset yourself so you don't have cancer anymore.
Hope you enjoy the episode brought to you by our sponsor, Thrive. Get fifty percent off your at-home gut health test when you go to trythrive.com/impacttheory. Enjoy the episode.
So five health defense systems.
What's the mechanism? And you're somehow programming the immune system to go seek that out. Is that accurate?
Well, there are different types of immunotherapy. Broadly speaking, immunotherapy is harnessing your body's own immune system to fight the cancer, which is different than inventing a toxic drug or even a which is different than inventing a toxic drug or even a, or even a smart bomb, you know, a targeted drug to actually go after the cancer. So immunotherapy relies on your immune system. It is true what you just said, there are some very specific kinds of immune systems where you can remove your immune system, reprogram it, you know, kind of turn it from, you know, turn, turn it from an ordinary immune cell into a super soldier, okay? And then inject it back in the body and it will go and go after the cancer. But there are other forms of immune therapy where what you're, what you're doing, and this is what I was talking about, cancers like to develop these sneaky ways of hiding from your immune system. They cloak themselves, you know, like the old Star Trek, the Klingons would turn on cloaking device and now you can't, the Enterprise can't find the enemy ship, okay? Well, that's what cancers actually do. Some immunotherapies, all they do is they rip the cloak off the cancer and the immune system goes, regular immune system goes, aha, I see you. I'm going to come after you and I'm going to get you. Because what keeps you and I from actually developing lethal cancers right here, right now, Tom, is that our immune system is spotting little tiny harmless microscopic cancers and saying, I see you, you're gone, okay? You're dead meat and they just clear off. It's like taking an eraser, just erasing the cancer right off the chalkboard, all right? So when you uncloak the cancer, it allows your immune system to do this. The best example of this is former president, US President Jimmy Carter. When he was in his nineties, he developed a melanoma that had spread to his liver and his brain. And, you know, it was at that point, this is about ten years ago now, almost ten years ago, a brain metastasis from a skin cancer, melanoma is pretty much a death sentence. And so he was happy, he happened to be one of the first people to actually get a treatment that ripped the cloak off of the melanoma cells in his brain and elsewhere. And it allowed his ninety-year-old immune system to see that cancer. And even at that age, even with that spread, he had all of his cancer cleared out of his system. And I use that knowledge to help treat my own mother, who actually had metastatic endometrial cancer. So this is, this came home to roost really on a personal level. And, you know, we were able to replicate that kind of finding, not from a skin cancer, but from an endometrial uterus cancer. So, you know, we haven't beaten cancer completely yet. But I'll tell you, I did not expect in my career, in my lifetime, to be able to see it's possible to take somebody with advanced cancer and turn the clock back and literally erase it off the chalkboard using immunotherapies. And so I'm talking about drugs. I mean, I talked a lot about drugs and stem cells and, you know, all that kind of stuff. But the amazing thing is that with this hardcore knowledge, now I, I worked in biotechnology, so I know what it takes to develop technologies to go after these, help enhance these health defenses. But what's amazing is that it's very hard to beat Mother Nature. And you can talk about drugs when you're talking about treating disease, but when you're talking about prevention and raising your shields, amping up your health defenses, you can't talk about drugs. You got to talk about something like food. And food is a medicine we take three times a day. And that's what I wrote about in my book, Eat to Beat Disease.
All right, before we get on to food, because we're going to spend a fair amount of time on that, I want to understand this uncloaking mechanism. What's going on at a cellular level? That one, what is the cloak itself? Is it like a biofilm, like what happens with bacteria? That, that seems odd, but maybe that is what happens. And then what is the removal mechanism?
Yeah, okay. So there are many different ways to cloak. We're discovering new ways and there are, in cancers, many ways. The one that actually has been amenable to immunotherapies has been a protein called PDL-1. It's called programmed deflagan-1. So this PDL-1 protein is made by lots of different cells to help our healthy cells protect, to protect ourselves against our immune system. So why doesn't, why don't most of us have autoimmune diseases? Because our immune system is jacked up and ready to kind of attack anything that it doesn't want. Well, it can recognize self or healthy self from disease because our healthy cells have created this protein called PDL-1. And it basically raises the flag, okay? Like on the lawn, this is, hey, you know what? We're normal. Please don't attack us. So cancers have hijacked PDL-1. And they make lots of PDL-1 all over themselves. And so basically, your immune system kind of wings right by. So these, these super soldiers, your regular immune system is with all these soldiers that are patrolling your body, our body all the time. They can't see the cancer because they're completely cloaked. It's just wearing another kind of assassin in a crowd waving a flag and so it ignores it. And yet, there it is. It's right there. So when you actually take that flag away and you let the body's Secret Service spot that thing, okay? Then your immune system will find the cells that are not waving the flag, that protein, PDL-1, say, uh huh, I'm coming after you.
All right, this is utterly fascinating. So let me say this in my sort of layman's terms and see how close I'm getting. So we've got autophagy. Your body's going through and it's saying, oh, here's a damaged cell. I'm going to strip it down for parts essentially. And so that, you know, whether it's a senescent cell that's just sort of misfiring or whether it's a cell that's literally broken, we're cleaning all that up. Now, I never stop to ask myself how the body knows that that cell is damaged. It knows it, if I'm understanding you correctly, because it stops producing this protein that you're talking about. So in the absence of the sign that says I'm healthy, the body then goes, okay, you're damaged and I need to strip you apart.
So that is part of autophagy. So autophagy is basically like recycling, you know? You take the plastic You know, you take the plastic parts and the bits and stuff after you've gotten your takeout or you carry out and you want to put it back so it can get reused in some useful way, or the other stuff thrown out. So that's autophagy. And yes, the, these types of signals are used to help distinguish between what you're going to keep and what you're not going to keep and, and what you should attack and what you should not.
Is that what we're triggering here? Is it normal autophagy? Or is there another layer where it's a totally different response?
Yeah, this is a, this is another layer. The autophagy will occur after the immune system actually finds it. But before that, it's really spotting the enemy. It is cellular profiling. Okay, so if you think about like the security force, you know, you've got a VIP in town. You've got a big crowd that's going to come out to hear the VIP. And you want to make sure that there are no assassins or trouble causers in the crowd. You actually have your security go out there and review who's coming to the party. And when they, when they get to the party, they're scanning the crowd, looking for, they're profiling the people. Does that, that individual, that cell look like it's carrying a problem? Okay, and, and most people are looking like innocents. And so they, they've got, you know, they've got the PDL, the proteins that basically say, hey, no, no, I'm you. I'm, I'm fine. Don't attack me. But that cancer is hiding itself, cloaking itself, masquerading like a good guy. Okay, so what immunotherapies can do is peel off the Mission Impossible mask.
How does it know? How does it notice selectively peel off the PDL? How do you keep it from just peeling PDL off everything?
Yeah, it's because tumors make a lot of it. They make tons of extra PDL. And in fact, this is how we're able to find out if you're a good candidate for this kind of immunotherapy. It's called a checkpoint inhibitor, checkpoint, just like checkpoint Charlie, just like the checkpoint for a security team, profiling to make sure there's no bad guys in the crowd. And, and, and tumors, cancers that are going to respond to this make a ton of this checkpoint. And what, what the, what happens is that the treatments have been designed so they're able to peel back the PDL-1. It's called a PDL-1 inhibitor, a checkpoint inhibitor. And literally it kind of rips the mask off of, of cancer. It doesn't rip it off everything, otherwise your whole immune system would go after you with autoimmune disease.
Do you have to inject it at the site or something?
No, it goes right into your bloodstream. And you want the, you want this thing to go everywhere, into your brain, into your toes, into your kidney, into your liver, everywhere. Okay, and that's the amazing part, like we are moving away from, you got to cut the patient open and look for the thing, or you got to scan, you can, the, this is, these biological therapies leverage the power of our health defenses.
This is so interesting and forgive me, I, I, piece by piece, I'm beginning to understand it better. Okay, so I want to keep pushing on this till I really get it. So what am I injecting exactly?
Right, well, first of all, not every tumor is going to be making tons of it. So some tumors are not going to respond to immunotherapy as easily. You got to find a different way to attack them. But the ones that do, here's what we do. We actually, there's a bag of liquid that contains a immunotherapy drug. They're called checkpoint inhibitors. And most of them are what we call monoclonal antibodies. So we're hearing a lot about antibodies in the news. We get a vaccine, your body makes antibodies. Antibodies are really kind of the ammunition that your immune system uses. They're the bullets that the immune system uses to attack things like viruses or cancers. And so what, but you, but then antibody can be designed. Okay, so you can actually create a designer antibody to tackle and strip away the PDL, the, the cloaking mechanism. So literally what, what's in a bag that you would actually drip in as an infusion is a bag full of antibodies that goes straight into your body. Okay, it's like getting an antibody infusion, that's exactly what it is. And these antibodies have been designed and dosed and primed. So all they do is they, they get all over your body. They're, they're patrolling everywhere and, and they don't last forever. So just in a single injection and they're ripping, anywhere there's extra PDL, extra cloaking, peel it right off, okay?
How did we get to the point where we could design something that would only strip it away if it's extra?
Ah, well, that's the, that's the heavy lifting of biotechnology. You got to look at normal, you got to look at abnormal. Then you got to titrate it, you got to figure out that recipe, you know? How, how does grandma, how does Nona make that red sauce so delicious? She just seems to know exactly, you know? They, they've tried this over and over again, different doses, different levels, different formulations, until they found just the right one.
Dude, that is so brilliant. That's really, really incredible. Okay, so about 20% of people, if I remember correctly, are like sort of hyper responders to that. You've got an interesting hypothesis that'll lead us into another one of our defense mechanisms, which maybe is the place to go next before we get to food, which is, and I don't know if it plays into the antibody role, but certainly just in, in treatments in general, that there are certain things that may be going on in your microbiome that metabolize the medication in a way that, that either works for or against you. Can you give us some color on that?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I, you know, you're, you're setting this up perfectly for me to tell you how our health defense systems don't work in their own silos. They actually work together. Our health defenses collaborate and through these connections, they can really help us resist diseases like cancer. So, you know, the microbiome is something that I can tell you, when I went to medical school, was never taught in med school. We were taught bacteria is bad. You want to actually scrub it out, clean it out, treat it out with an antibiotic. Well, now we know that actually most of the bacteria in our body is good. There's a few bad actors, but most of them are good. And a lot of the good ones live in our gut. Okay, and the gut bacteria, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, do all kinds of amazing and crazy kind of things. One of the things they do is the gut bacteria talks to our immune system, which connects back to the immunotherapy. So you need to have a good immune system that's ready to rock. Okay, ready to respond to the immunotherapy that you may be treated with. That's what's hanging in the bag. So if you hang something in the bag, the antibodies that go into your bloodstream that rip off the cloaking device, you still need the other half of your immune system. The other half of the immune system has got to be good enough to go after it. Now, it turns out the microbiome pretty much is the trainer for the immune system. One of the trainers, one of the caretakers, one of the housekeepers of the immune system. And so if your microbiome isn't in good shape, your immune system's not going to be in good shape as well. Now, here's what's kind of crazy. Most doctors that are out there in practice now, when we were in school, we were told that our immune system, like where's your immune system? It's in our lymph nodes, it's in our spleen, it's in our thymus, you know? People kind of like had, we, we had a checkbox of places that the immune system is located. Right, you got a lymph node after you got like a sore throat or flu or something like that, bronchitis. That's not where the immune system is now. We, we know that there's some there, but actually 70% of our immune system lives inside our gut. So think about your intestines, right? It's a big, long tube, like a Sasha's casing. Garden hose, cut a garden hose in half, it's got a layer. Inside that layer, think about the jelly rolls, think about it like a jelly roll now. Inside the middle of that layer is 70% of our immune system inside our gut, wrapped like a, like the jelly in a jelly roll. Now, where is the bacteria? The bacteria is inside our gut. That ecosystem's inside our gut, like inside the tube. And then the jelly rolls where the immune system is, 70% of our immune system. So what happens? What's the connection? What's the collaboration? Our gut talks to our immune system like college roommates living in a dorm. Right, so you go to college, paper thin walls, right? Some guy wants pizza, what are we going to have tonight? You know, you just pound through the wall and shout through the wall and the guy knows what you want to order. Right, that's the same thing. Your gut bacteria can talk to the immune system through the walls of the bacteria and help to prompt them and give them commands and how to actually get in good shape. Drop down and give me 50, you know? Like that's actually what our gut bacteria is able to do for our immune system. Now, there's one bacteria that's actually, they're different bacteria that are important for different things. We're just beginning to discover this. There's one bacteria that seems to be particularly important. It's called Acromancia mucinophilum, Acromancia mucinophilum. I'm going to come back to the name in a second. So this immunotherapy, cancer therapy, I mean, it's truly remarkable what it can actually achieve in its best form. Okay, but yeah, only about 20% of people are the kind of responders that we wish we all would be. Right, the Jimmy Carters or my mothers, for example. And so one of my colleagues in Paris, Dr. Laurence Zitbogel, is an immuno-oncologist. Okay, and she took 200 people that had different types of cancers, breast, colon, pancreas, right? And she, and they were all treated with immunotherapy. And of course, only 20% had the good response, the beneficial response. The other one were so-so, ketsi-ketsi response, okay? And, and she looked at everything that made the difference between responders and non-responders, right? That's a typical thing that an analyst would do. What makes a good one, what makes a bad one? What are the differences? She could not find any difference between the responders and the non-responders, except for one bacteria. That one bacteria was Acromancia mucinophilum. The people who responded it had it in their gut, one bacteria. And the people who didn't respond to immunotherapy had a bad outcome, were missing it.
That's so interesting.
You're so crazy, okay? So she took the, so she, she replicated that in the lab and found that if she had mice growing cancers and she gave them immunotherapy, if she gave them an antibiotic to wipe out acromancia, man, the cancer just grew, 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 grew. They didn't respond to the treatment. If she put acromancia back in their gut, the tumors responded, they shrank, 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 disappeared. Amazing, right? And by the way, she got the acromancia from human patients. She put it back into the mouse. So, all right, so what does it have to do with how to boost acromancia, right? Because it's very sensitive. You have, if I were to give you a Z-Pak, okay, to treat bronchitis, that would wipe out acromancia. Your body will eventually grow it back slowly but surely. But if you had cancer and you're getting this treatment, you cannot afford, you don't have time. Time's not on your side, right? So we cannot eat acromancia right now as a, as a supplement. There doesn't exist, it's not a probiotic. Okay, not yet. The only thing that we can do is actually grow acromancia. So we have to be our own gardeners of our microbiome to grow the acromancia. So our immune system is in good shape so that the acromancia can talk to the immune system so that that part of it is in good shape to respond to immunotherapy. How do you do that? Well, it's all in the name. Okay, Acromancia mucinophilum, mucin. This bacteria loves to grow in mucus, loves to grow in the mucus of the gut. Our gut normally secretes mucus. So the more mucus we have, it's like fertilizer, the more, the more acromancia will grow. So how do we grow the mucus? Well, you can eat foods, pomegranate, pomegranate juice, the elagotanins, natural chemicals in pomegranate. Actually, one of the few things that can stimulate our gut, natural gut, natural substance in our, to our gut naturally to secrete more mucus. So you can grow back your acromancia. So that's basically what we're doing now with some of these cancer patients is making sure before they get immunotherapy, that they're actually growing back their acromancia.
This is crazy and this brings us right to food. One of the things that's so profound about your approach is you've compared the response to all kinds of diseases to a drug and then the response to food as if it were a drug. And it really, I literally have the chills right now just saying that. It, it is astonishing how you can get a response from eating food, whether it's pomegranates increasing the mucosal layer in your intestines or many, many other things, which I'm sure you will rattle through some of here shortly, that if you saw a drug that gave that kind of response, it would be a multi-billion dollar drug and people would be losing their minds. But the fact that it's food becomes even hard to test for. Walk us through some of the early realizations that you had around that. And I've heard you talk about how as an oncologist, it's easy to get, you know, oh God, what are the, the chemotherapy drugs and test it out in your lab. But if you ask the same thing about what the response would be for broccoli or something, it's like nobody, they look at you sort of sideways. Talk to me about food as a drug.
Yeah, so first of all, food is medicine is an ancient concept. And if you go back to the ancient societies and ancient cultures, like Greek culture or Asian culture, food isn't just food, it's not just sustenance, you know? It's actually part of our lives and part of our lives is actually what we eat influences our bodies. Here's how I came into this, you know, very honestly. I'm not one of these doctors that basically, you know, quit modern medicine and then poo-pooed and issued prescription drugs. Like I just told you, I, I've actually been involved with developing biotech drugs. So I, I believe that new medications can be really, really important for the right person at the right time in the right situation. However, I started to realize that because I helped to develop many of the systems to develop drugs, that we were not taking full advantage of all these testing systems. Right, and, and to just to flesh out how I explained it, I, I'm a cancer researcher, so I, I've done a lot of research within cancer labs. And I can tell you, you can go on the internet, click on some chemo drug or whatever, have it FedExed to you by, by a mail order, have it arrive the next day, put a, a little spoonful of the chemo drug into a, into an experiment. And within a few days, or maybe even a few hours, you would know using this test system, whether or not the drug is effective against cancer, where there's activity. Okay, now, you can pick up the phone and you can call on a pizza or a salad and have it delivered in 15 minutes. And you ask the same cancer researcher, how do I study what the onions do? What do, what does the anchovies do? What do the, you know, what does their lettuce do? And they would scratch their heads and say, I have no idea. So that's what I did 10 years ago, is to tackle that challenge of, of bringing two worlds, making two worlds collide, the world of biotechnology where we have, like, you can't believe how sophisticated some of these testing systems are. And that's what's amazing, because you can throw in the drugs too. And you can throw in the foods and then you can compare them side by side. So my areas in the field of angiogenesis, how the body grows blood vessels. For years, cancer researchers were finding, trying to find ways to cut off the blood supply that feed cancers. So if a cancer doesn't get a blood supply, it's just this microscopic thing and it can't grow. In fact, tumors cannot grow larger than the head of a ballpoint pen, the tip of a ballpoint pen, until it gets a blood supply. No oxygen, no nutrients, no growth. All right, but when cancer is actually able to get this blood supply, they start taking off. It can grow 16,000 dimes in two weeks. So it's, angiogenesis is a trigger to propel cancer growth. So finding drugs that can inhibit angiogenesis or stop blood vessels from going to tumors was at one point kind of a holy grail. It was, you know, like, how do we get that? Lots of drugs, I've been involved with the whole thing. And now there are actually lots of real FDA-approved drugs. But we were able to study foods in that same system. Foods, some of the foods, soybeans, grapes, strawberries, lemons. And it was crazy to actually see, because I have the street cred of being able to study against the biotech drugs that pound for pound, ounce for ounce, molecule for molecule. In, in, in many cases, the food held their own against the drug. Some cases more powerfully. Obviously, some foods are not as powerful. But that actually opens the gateway for a whole new future. And I think that's something that's really exciting to watch.
No joke, do we know what's going on at the molecular level? Is it a metabolite that our microbiome produces when breaking down grapes that's stopping the angiogenesis? Or is it something else?
Yeah, so, so Mother Nature in creating foods have laced these foods with natural chemicals, right? These are called bioactives. And they're called bioactives because they're biologically active. And in a plant, let's look at a strawberry, for example, okay? The tartness of strawberries, you know, there's strawberries are sweetened tart. The tartness comes from an acid, unsurprisingly, called ilagic acid. Okay, and so you know when a strawberry is a little tartier because it's got more ilagic acid. So ilagic acid is a powerful starver of cancer. So it cuts off the
Does that actually end up in our bloodstream? Like can, could I eat strawberries and then you could draw my blood and be like, you had seven strawberries?
Absolutely.
That is insane.
Okay, now, but here's, here's the even more insane part. What are these, what are these bioactives doing in the plant? They are part of the plant's health defense system. So these natural chemicals help the plant defend themselves. When we eat them, they have another job description. They do double duty and they actually help to activate our own body's health defenses. Now, here's one thing that I think is a practical value. You know, for a long time, people are sort of talking about like, well, you know, like you should eat more organic and don't need pesticides and stuff like that. Here's a whole new take on this, okay? And this is kind of smoking hot information. Pesticides actually kill insects so that the plants look better. The leaves aren't as chewed up and usually the fruits or vegetables look a little bit better too. Right, that's just agriculture, makes it look better and the product look better on the shelf. Organic doesn't use that. And so a lot of times you get, you have that more natural, you know, the bugs are nipping at the leaves and chewing at the stems. Guess what? Mother Nature created things like ilagic acid as natural insecticides. And so basically when the, the plant, striving plant is being chewed on, it makes more ilagic acid to repel the bugs. It's a wound healing response and a defensive response. So organic foods have more bioactives as a reaction. I just was involved with a study I was meeting about yesterday, talking about coffee. Organic versus conventionally grown coffee. Conventional grown coffee with pesticides, organic coffee. Conventional grown coffee with pesticides, organic coffee. Hands down, um, this is a study at the University of Warsaw University. Um, hands down, um, a pound for pound of coffee bean, organic coffee has more bioactives than the pesticide treated coffee because the insects, the natural things in the environment cause it to create more natural health defenses.
Dude, this, yeah, this gets incredible. I can't believe I'm this deep in my journey of health and all that. And I never realized that the actual chemical compounds from food, I always thought it was the metabolites from the di- the digestive process that was making its way into the bloodstream, which I know also happens.
Also happens.
Yeah, that's uh, that's really intriguing. So one thing we actually haven't talked a lot about, which is your specialty is angiogenesis. So when we eat something that has an anti-angiogenesis benefit, is it like ubiquitous across every blood vessel in the body? Or is it doing something, creating some sort of knock-on effect like the antibody drip that we're getting where it's somehow selectively targeting things that are overproducing something?
Great question. Let me kind of um frame it in uh, uh, first framing about angiogenesis in general. So when we were in our mom's wombs, okay? And sperm met egg and started to form a little ball of cells that didn't look anything like a person yet, that started to create little organs and start to create shape. The first organs that could created are blood vessels, our circulation is the first thing that gets created. So our blood supply, our circulation is very much a part of who we are. And I mentioned that we have sixty thousand miles worth of blood vessels. Just to give you a sense of how extraordinarily big that is, if you were to pull out all the blood vessels uh from, from you or me and line them up end to end, that would form a thread um that would go around the earth twice. Huge, okay? It is insane. Now, um, our, every single cell in our body, every organ require, um relies on just the right amount of blood flow, so they're getting fed with oxygen and nutrients. Um, uh, they don't need more than just the right amount. And, but if they don't have enough, our body has to be able to grow more, okay? This, having just the right amount, I call it the Goldilocks zone. So Goldilocks, remember the, the, the story? Um, you know, the bears went in there and it's not too hot, not too cold, not too hard, not too soft. Or our health defenses, including angiogenesis, is exactly the same way. Not too much and not too little, but just the right amount. So this just right zone exists for our blood vessels, our stem cells, our microbiome, our DNA kind of balance, as well as our immune systems, all about homeostasis, a term you used earlier. Just the right amount. Now, that means our body knows how to grow more when it's necessary. And then when there's enough, it stops. And if there's too much, it's kind of like a gardener, you know, that sees your lawn over growing, it mows the lawn, mows it right back down till it gets to the right height. Okay, our body's health defenses, when they're working at their best, there's like a perfectly manicured lawn. Not too much, not too little, just the right amount to be able to uh to, to, to go around, like playing like rounds of golf on a perfect course. Now, um, what tumors do is they hijack this process. And so they, like a tumor is sitting on a golf course and just grows extra weeds and grass right just for itself. So that's what gets targeted. Your body tries to fight that off, but sometimes we need some extra help for it. That extra help can be a smart bomb drug that we um designed to target those extra blood vessels. Or we can help our body mow the lawn by eating foods that have anti-angiogenic or blood vessel mowing capacity. You'll never go to get rid of them all. It's just back down to the body's set point. So what's an example of um a, a drug that can actually do this? There's monoclonal antibodies that are designed like smart bombs to take out tumor blood vessels. But foods can actually do it too. Now, why can drugs and foods target a tumor blood vessel and not take down your aorta or the blood vessels feeding your brain, like your carotid artery? It's because when we build healthy blood vessels, we take, our body takes great care to construct them to be very, very strong. It's like building a skyscraper, okay? The architects and the contractors and their craftsmen, they make everything perfect, as perfect as they can. But when a tumor does it, you know, it doesn't, it's not careful contractor. It's like a lousy contractor, just throws it, the, the, the thing up. And so the blood vessels that are grown are flimsy, they're fragile, they're unstable. And so think about, you know, a hurricane, like Hurricane Ida sweeps through the area and the strong sturdy structures, our healthy blood vessels are going to stay up even when the wind is there. All the ones that are not well constructed, the wind blows them right down. And that's why a tumor blood vessel is much more vulnerable to either food or drug.
Wow, that, that's really incredible. Okay, so you wrote the book Eat to Beat Disease. We've touched on a little bit, but now I think it's worth, what, what is your sort of general? I know that there's never going to be a one size fits all. It's very important for people to understand. But in terms of general uh patterns of eating to beat disease, what are those general patterns?
Yeah, well, first of all, um, when I wrote Eat to Beat Disease, which became a New York Times bestseller, uh, the whole point was not about writing about a diet. It's not keto, it's not South Beach, it's not about weight loss even. It's really about health. And because when I was um doing my research to look at different foods that would activate our health defenses, here's the first thing I was surprised by. It's not like one food or two foods or five foods or, you know, it was more than two hundred different kinds of foods. And they were fruits and they were vegetables, they were spices and they were legumes. And they were different kinds of seafood, including shellfish. And they were different kinds of fish beyond salmon, okay? Um, and, and there's even some dairy products that can actually have some benefits as well, including fermented foods um like yogurt and sauerkraut and kimchi. And these foods are so ubiquitous that they are found in the traditional cultures of every single society, but especially Mediterranean diet, which we know is healthier for us as a pattern, and Asian food, which we also know is healthier. And so what I started to realize is that eating to beat disease is not just picking a particular disease and trying to figure out what the recipe is, that the one size fits all. But it's really um a journey that we have our whole lives, from the time we're small until we get old, we get older. Um, parents have the opportunity to actually start feeding their children when, as soon as they're taking solid food. Foods that can actually help them beat disease. In fact, breastfeeding is actually helping your child um uh beat disease by uh shaping and sculpting their microbiome, right? One of the health defense systems. So I came up with two hundred different foods. I laid them all out according to which health defense systems they activate. Some cases, they activate all of the health defense systems. I call those grand slammers because, man, a single food will knock out, you know, knock the five health defenses out of the park, it's a home run to eat those things. And I explain, all the research has been done by myself and other people to show how they actually work. So what's the principle? To eat to beat disease, you can love your food to love your health. Love your food to love your health. That seems so contradictory to what we used to think about healthy food, right? Because the old thinking is that, oh, you gotta eat healthy, you gotta cut out everything you love, you know? And, and, and I'm, I'm turning that upside down, inside out, I'm inverting the whole equation. I'm saying, if you look at those two hundred foods that I put down in my book Eat to Beat Disease, take a Sharpie out and circle the ones that you love already. I like this, I like that one, tomatoes I like, oh man, I like this one. Okay, that's a great starting point because if you start eating those foods, you're already ahead of the game because you already love foods that can actually eat to, that can activate your health defenses. Now you can explore, expand your horizons by choosing these other foods that are out there as well. If you sat on TV and watched the Food, the Food Network, you can find all these people experimenting with different ingredients. If you go onto YouTube, you can look for an ingredient you don't recognize, bitter melon. The heck is a bitter melon? Well, it's an Asian gourd. Is it bitter? Absolutely, but there are ways of actually cooking it so that it's not so bitter and it has medicinal value. Well, how would I do it? Click on YouTube and search on recipe, cooking bitter melon, and you'll watch somebody teach it to you. So love your food to love your health, explore with your life. And just know that the foods I put in the book activate your body's health defenses.
Right, and some of the things I know you've recommended um historically, mostly plant-based. Um, you talk about getting some omega-three from marine sources, uh, whether it's from fish or whether it's from uh, I, I think you talk about seaweed, you'd have to refresh my memory. Um, you do personally eat some meat, though I don't know if you eat any red meat or not. I know you recommend that people cut that down, uh, extra virgin olive oil, um, things like that. Am I missing any of the, the heavy hitting advice?
Well, I mean, so here, here's the basic thing. Um, all the research, scientific research has been done. And the epidemiological, the public health research shows that eating a plant-based, mostly plant-based diet, that, that's pretty broad, you know? Um, uh, fruits, vegetables, legumes, nuts, uh, healthy oils, good for you. You should eat most, mostly that. Doesn't mean, uh, and by the way, uh, plant-based could be tricky because a lot of ultra-processed foods also have um plant materials in it. Processed soy, all kinds of other things, all kinds of unhealthy oils made from plants. However, if it's whole plant-based foods, it's kind of stuff you'd find in a grocery store or a farmer's market, okay? Like, I would say mostly go for those, mostly go for those, okay? Um, uh, seafood has been shown to improve survival and decrease the risk of death. If you eat two or three servings of, of seafood, shell, it could be fish or shellfish, um, you get a healthy omega-three fatty acids.
Is that per day?
Per week, two to three servings per week. And the amount you would eat, uh, which I write a whole chapter about food doses, uh, you, amount you would eat is about three ounces. So people like, well, wait, I'm not a human scale, I have no idea what three ounces is. What I would say, it's a lot less than you think. It is a piece of fish about the size of a deck of playing cards. You can put it in your palm and it's about, yay, it's about as thick as a deck of playing cards. Not that big a deal and, you know, um, and, and people who love seafood can, can get a lot of it that way. Recently, there was an interesting study that showed if you actually increase your level of omega-threes by an extra serving a week or two, like from wherever you are with your starting point, you can increase your longevity, your survival by four point seven years. So an extra serving of, of, of omega-three rich seafood, you increase your survival by lifetime, survival by four point seven years. Now, you can get, if you're a vegan or vegetarian, you can get omega-threes from plant-based foods. So chia seeds, flax seeds, some of the nuts, you can get those as well. But what in plant-based foods, you get a different kind of substrate to make your omega-threes. So you gotta eat a lot more of it. So, you know, um, I, 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 I like diversity. So um, plant, whole plant-based foods, seafoods, if you actually eat fish. Um, if, if you don't, explore it, if it's not for some ethical reason. Um, and then, you know, look, uh, and dairy, by the way, you know, uh, when it comes to food and health, there's no universals, okay? Some dairy products, you know, like honestly cheeses are good for the microbiome because many traditionally made cheeses, not in large quantities, they've got saturated fats and a lot of salt. But some cheeses actually have lactobacillus and other healthy gut bacteria that we can use as a probiotic food. Yogurt, a dairy product, probiotic food. And so I'm all about the science, wherever the science takes me is where the evidence takes me. There was a great American novelist named E.L. Doctorow and he uh had this great uh quote. He once said, writing, he's a novelist, writing is like driving at night. Um, you can't uh see beyond your headlights, but you can make the whole trip that way. And that's what science is like, you just can only see where your headlights are going and you're focusing on the evidence and ignoring all the darkness that's out, actually out there. So what about meat? Okay, um, I, I can tell you that most of the research has been pretty convincing that it'd be a lot of red meat. Okay, which was really only done for the last seventy years or so? Like, you know, since the nineteen fifties. Um, before that, most societies didn't have, were, were not prosperous enough to have a ton of meat around, okay? And, and now we have an abundance of meat that we've industrialized meat and all the things that are not so good for us. But um, all the studies show that eating a lot of red meat and all the studies have shown that eating processed meats, we're talking about our sausages and the pepperonis and all kinds of other hot dogs, all that kind of stuff. Um, that's been classified by the World Health Organization as a carcinogen, by the way, processed meats. You know, once in a while, especially if that's something you really enjoy, don't worry about it, knock yourself out, enjoy it, but do not do it all the time. And if you can cut it down or cut it out, more power to you, better for you. And so this whole idea about, you know, life is for the living, gotta enjoy our, how we do things. You know, some things we enjoy aren't that good for us, you know? Some people like to roll down the windows or take the top down and drive really fast on a, on a road faster than the speed limit. Just don't do it all the time because one of these times you're gonna actually get into an accident, right? And so I think that idea of moderation, but if you're informed by science and you can actually then listen to your body, if you feel like crap after eating something, don't go for it, don't eat it the next time or eat less of it. The, the science is just so rich at this point in time in history that, you know, anybody that wants to get into food as medicine, as a science, not as a trend, that is a real science, has a huge future ahead of them.
Dude, that's all amazing. This has been absolutely wonderful. Where can people follow along with you? Are you on social? Where can I get the book?
Yeah, well, so um first first of all, you can, uh, I, I continuously put new information out that I'm finding on, uh, on social media and through, uh, you can find it on my website, come to my website, DrWilliamLee, D R William Lee, L I dot com, DrWilliamLeeCot dot com. I'm also at DrWilliamLee on social, on Instagram, on Facebook. Um, I also uh, uh, do free masterclasses every now and then. I'm a supervision-driven person, so whenever, every now and then I'll feel like I gotta get out there and I just gotta teach a masterclass. And I'll go out there for free and people can find out about it on my, on my website, DrWilliamLee dot com. And I, and you know, spend an hour with me and I'll give you an update on what's, what's new, what's going on, how your health defense systems uh work for it. And I also have an online course as well for people that really are interested in the deep dives.
Thank you guys so much for watching and being a part of this community.
This is a very fascinating interaction, actually. I think uh we'll need to re-watch again and catch up with other scientists and discussions on preventative health. Really excellent. Yeah, uh, I think I think uh we have finished all the uh videos except for one. So uh we'll have all your assignment topics by tomorrow. Uh, please go through the content whenever you are free. So I think we can close it. Any, anyone has anything to suggest? We'll spend two or three minutes and then we can close.
Good evening, sir.
Yeah.
Uh, the last video, which really, uh, excellent video regarding cancers and food, what are the precautions we have to take?
Correct.
How, what are the care we should take about a healthy life and what, what is the important uh importance about the food, about our life and survival? Actually, I had my personal experience, my father got lung cancer in two thousand fourteen, sir. Hmm, was admitted in Velour CMC, uh, he was completely recovered, he's fine now.
Okay, okay.
So that is one of the reasons made me to join in our natural farming project also, actually. The food is majorly uh creating troubles to us while through other practice, other chemical fertilizers which are causing a lot of health issues and damages. We, we are unable to identify the reasons for the, some of the cancers also, there is no reason. When we admitted my father also, they told, they don't know the reason why he got the problem. So somehow I connected to video, it was really excellent. We all should follow, we all should take the precautions while we are uh eating the food and uh our project, whatever is going on, is going to give the uh best future to the future generations and to us also. It is a great hope on, uh, go, great hope in me. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, actually, uh, thanks for sharing your story. So like we are working on alternatives with a differently, different paradigm altogether in health sector also, many scientists and groups are also working like Walter Rhianna and DeDe Persos, I think uh she visited our project uh in two thousand and nineteen. Her work is on preventative health, actually, preventive health. So ecology and care, I think she's the author of that book, Ecology of Care. Okay, yeah. So she talks a lot about uh preventive health as well. So I think this is picking up uh those who are working on the alternatives. I think we have to know, uh, try to link our work and also the consumer and also we need to be more aware and more knowledgeable so that we can convince many people. And we also should uh update our knowledge in health and nutrition aspects as well. Yes, I think it was a fascinating video. Yeah, if, nothing else to discuss, I think we can close this session now. We'll catch up sometime later.